...in a month, and which is normally held in a workshop format for special topics. How's that? We'll go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance, and Cap, can you lead us on the pledge?
Please place the flag and hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please, in memory of CHP Officer Moya. And we've lost a couple of more people here in the valley, most recently Aida O'Connor. So I'd like us to just keep them in our thoughts for a moment. Thank you. Okay, City Clerk.
Air Force Bishop.
See who's here, here.
Airport Tim Bishop. Councilmember Ben Court.
Here.
Councilmember Korea.
Here.
Councilmember Loa. We have a quorum.
I'll make a motion to excuse Loa and Bishop.
I second it.
Yeah, without objection, so order. Public comments on presentation and non-agenda items. Do you have any speaker slips?
We have none.
Anybody wanting to say something? Or we're gonna move right into the presentation? Well, there we go. You wanna introduce?
Mayor, I'm pleased tonight to introduce Larry Cosmon of the Cosmon Companies, along with his associates Brian Moncrief and Robert Valenti, to talk about enhanced infrastructure finance districts and several other finance tools that we think can be utilized in Palmdale, particularly with recent changes in some of the structure or how the county's treating some of these items, and more clarity on things like opportunity zones that's coming forward. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Larry Cosmon, who's had many years of experience in these areas and worked with many cities.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience, Larry Cosmon from Cosmon Companies. We've had the privilege and the opportunity to work with Palmdale over the last number of years in a variety of projects. We're always pleased to be part of this team. And we're here tonight to present what I think is a very significant turn of events in terms of economic development. And I hope this presentation, among other things, would provide an understanding of the pathways forward for a local community to help assist itself in terms of private investment and public improvements.
I had a question, maybe a clarification. I think that we had something similar about a year, year and a half ago now. I do recall you mentioned this type of opportunities. But that was not the main focus at the time, right? It was about something else?
Yeah, so it was really, we covered a whole variety of tools back then, but at that time, we were pretty focused on one of the areas we'll talk about tonight, which was the medical area off of Palmdale. What this is, so I'm glad you brought this up, because I think it's a great place to start. What this is, is really a look at where the state has taken these economic development tools and the progress we've made in terms of using tax increment for public and private investment. The difference is, tonight, there's actually specific areas that we are looking at and want to discuss with you that could be included in an enhanced infrastructure financing district or another special district called Community Revitalization Investment Authority, a CRIA. So it's EIFD and CRIA. And there's, at this point, there's essentially eight areas that really could be included in this strategy. And you'll see it, and I think it's pretty compelling. So it's an exciting time, because what happened a couple of years ago, we were still exploring these. Well, since then, Cosmon in particular has received approval of three EIFDs that have started and we're working with LA County to induce partnerships on tax increment financing, which we'll talk about. And so now is the time, if Palmdale is gonna strike out and, you know, create an economic development pathway that really can improve the community, we think it's a ripe time to have that discussion. And that's why we're back.
Those days have, I know you still have to go through your presentation, but does this have anything to do with opportunity zones? Is that a completely separate program, or could this be part of it?
Could be part of it. It's a totally separate program that can be part of it, which is another exciting element of this, is we, back then, two years ago, opportunity zones weren't even part of anybody's vocabulary. And now, womb, all of a sudden, we have a number of opportunity zones in this community which can be bridged as part of this strategy, so you'll see that as well.
Well, I'm sorry to be mean to interrupt you before your presentation, before you started, but I just wanted to have a clear understanding of what this is.
I encourage all of you to interrupt me as much as you want through the presentation. Yeah, so we're used to it, it's a better way to have a conversation. So the way I'll start is just to talk about how economic development leadership is so key. Just spend a couple of minutes, because it's not the same economic development that we used to have years ago when we pursued just sales tax. Today, you know, we're living in a place and in a world, it's a modern digital economy. People have choices. They don't really have to leave anymore. They can just about buy anything they want on the internet. The lobby in my house is proof positive of that, by the way. I thought Mr. Zappos was become a friend of the family. I didn't realize he was a shoe seller. So the reality is, is that we have to be much more creative about what we do with our major projects, because otherwise, they won't make it over the long term. So a lot of this is about finding the right projects, making the best public investments in a world that has shifted from purely bricks to a combination of bricks and clicks. And in this graphic, one of the things that I like to focus on is that pursuing economic development with all these major demographic shifts that really lead us to people wanting to be in a place, not necessarily a space. And it affects every kind of deal. Hotel, or a retail center, or what we call mixed use, or new residential, which is having to build different kinds of products. We have, you know, Generation Z, we have the Millennials. They're really looking for a lot of the things that we look for in my generation. I'm a boomer, but also with a different notion, that they can connect differently, because they connect on this very easily, and they can get back and forth differently, because they don't always need to use a car. There are other alternatives. Just those notions have changed how retail is done. In fact, it's gone from just purely storefronts to delivery. I always use this quote from Don Henley, says, "We're a nation of noses pressed up against the glass." We see it on the TV, now internet, we want it really fast. So if we're gonna do economic development, we need to know about those things. We also need to recognize that the state has its own agenda. And it's really about housing and sustainability, and actually reducing carbon footprint and building a green economy. So that's a good prelude for why we're thinking that the tax increment districts that are available to us can help this community help create a more attractive place to live, work, play and shop, and improve mobility and connectivity. I mean, that's the recipe. This slide is really the recipe for success. The question is, how do you get that done? Well, the state wants you to get it done a certain way. I'm gonna spend a couple of minutes on the state, and then I'm gonna talk about how these districts are actually, could be implemented, and where they could be implemented in Palmdale. The state wants us to achieve a green economy. That means extraordinary reductions in greenhouse gases with pretty unrealistic goals in terms of timeframe. But I'll tell you that that motivation, plus increasing housing production, which are the two primary agendas when it comes to economic development that sit on the state's desk, really gives cities like Palmdale the ability to take these mandates, and they're never-ending. It's clean air mandates, it's mobility mandates, it's complete streets. It is, you know, integrated regional plans, and we see it SCAG, and of course, adopting climate action plans. But you can take these mandates and actually produce an economic development strategy around them. And this slide just shows that the state has been pretty busy approving a whole bunch of districts. And here they are, that are really meant to give local communities certain tools to build housing, sustainability. But if done right, I call it the Tai Chi of economic development. You can take that momentum and move it in your direction and convert it to a holistic, integrated economic development strategy. And Councilmember Korea, you see opportunity zones on the left. That's in addition to these districts that we talked about last time, which have evolved. We have this one. And that really serves up a platter of pretty interesting economic development strategic opportunities. Drilling down, tonight we'll talk about two major districts that exist that are now proven out. You know, Cosmon's had some pretty good success with enhanced infrastructure financing districts, which are 45-year property tax increment districts. Unlike redevelopment, you don't need a BLIT test to get them approved. You really start them, and they're guided by an adopted infrastructure financing plan. There is also a companion, but slightly different district, which is a housing-type district, and it's called Community Revitalization Investment Authority. I don't make these names up, but they are what they are. But the CRIA is a little bit like the EIFD, except it's much more focused on providing housing. So for every tax increment dollar that's generated in that district, 25% of it has to be spent on housing. So it's a slightly different version of the EIFD, but they both use, yes.
Before you move, can you go back to the previous?
Yeah, sure.
So the last workshop we did, I remember we talked about the LA County not willing to participate in the property tax.
Yes.
Has that changed? Or is it still the same?
Yeah, we went down and had that meeting with Barger, and I was there, you were there, who else? Who else we have there?
We had multiple meetings.
We had probably about 30 cities that went in and spoke on that. But that was as a result of numerous meetings leading up to it.
And the Republican Council as well. Can you talk about that a little bit, Larry?
Yes, so, actually, I wanna just do this, if you don't mind. And I don't really mind being jumbled around at all, but I think if I could take you to... So we're starting, this gets to the answer to your question, right? So, and actually, I would say this, that the question is, why would a partnership be achievable, right? That's what you're asking, it's the right question. So first of all, it's being done. You know, just this week, we made an announcement. Brian worked on this. Placentia and the County of Orange have actually partnered on tax increment. The county said, yes, it's a transit-oriented development in Old Town Placentia. City put in about 14 cents, it had 14 to put in, which was less than what they had. And the county put in all of their, I think it's 5.8 or 6 cents. So there's a full multi-year partnership to improve that area. In Laverne, which has happened since the time we're here, we got the city approved their public financing authority. And next month, on the county's Economic Development Committee, will be a recommendation for the county to participate in the Laverne EIFD. Something that we've been working on a while. And just finally, another Cosmon project, all three of these we have done. And they're the only ones in the state. We're actually, you know, I just would say that we're pretty much the industry leader in this, and I'm not there to tout our firm, it just so happens, we've been working on these. Redondo Beach wants to convert that 50-acre power plant that sits right on the water. Most people know it. It's pretty much an eyesore, it's being decommissioned, and they'll fund, they'll buy half of it from the private developer that's buying it from the AES Power Company. And they're gonna convert it to an amenity, like a regional park with wetlands restoration and public amenities. So these districts can be used for a lot of different things. And in that particular case, Supervisor Han has supported this, and that will go in front of that Economic Development Committee in the next couple of months. So we now can say to you that, one, the County of LA has adopted an EIFD policy that says that they'll give you up to 15 cents as a city if you prove out a case of need, which is where the rubber is the road.
Are now the local cities set a 15% issue anymore?
They are holding them to a 15 cent, but they have a, with some help that we got from SCAG and from LEAGUE, they've modified their conditions to enable special case to be made for less than 15 cents. So we have an opening, and in fact, they're willing to hear that. So we think the basis applies for that. We think the door's been opened, because a lot of us rattled the county's cage, and I think in a friendly way, and said, "Look, you don't wanna just turn off a community from showing up just because you have this hurdle." So they've opened that door. So I'm here to say that, good memory, because that was a door that was much more shut two years ago, this work just proves out that you've got a chance to do that. And I think when we show you these districts, you'll see why I think we could paint a picture that's pretty rosy for the county to become enthusiastic about becoming a partner with us. Is it guaranteed? No, but the decision would be, do we try?
Yeah, they seemed a lot more flexible after all these cities showed up there. We were, and after all the lead work that went in ahead of that.
Correct.
And when Supervisor Barger, you know, brought this motion up, that we reexamine and restate the policy, and that, and she said that this really should be used more as a guideline as opposed to a standard. And the rest of the supervisors are all nodding their head. They pointed out that out of 80-some cities, the 70-some cities were completely unable to participate.
Yeah, they flunked before the test even got passed out.
Exactly, so, so after all that discussion, have they gotten back something in writing on that yet?
They have a set of guidelines that came from that, well, generated by that meeting, as far as more flexibility in what we can use for match. And more flexibility on that 15% not being so hard. Yeah, such a hard number. And it really depends on the project. I mean, one of the things that you'll see is the county's looking at kind of, projects that have a regional significance with transit. There's gotta be something tied to it more than just, you know, your average retail project or something like that. It's, and so that kinda helped guide our decision-making when we started picking areas that we thought we might wanna pitch to the county.
Okay. And you may also recall that, you know, last time I said, these are, to me, much more like business plans. You're trying to create a strategic business plan, unlike redevelopment, where you're creating a BLIT plan. Here's a business plan that you take to the county, who really becomes a co-investor, and say, "Look, county, here's what's in it for you, here's what's in it for us. Together, we're better." That's the discussion we had in Placentia, that's the discussion we had in Laverne, and we're starting to have in Redondo. For example, in Redondo, where are we gonna get the $50 million to buy beachfront property?
I know, that's been the question all the time.
Right? I mean...
You get it from the guy that keeps cleaning my boat from all that stuff that's coming off of that plant.
Those fees are going up, no, I'm kidding. Okay, so let me take you then, and I have some case studies on those particular projects that I was talking about, but if you don't mind, I'll go back to where we were. So just to refresh everyone's memory, or in case you didn't have any memory on this, it's very, the tax increment sounds complicated, but it's actually a pretty straightforward notion. What happens is, is that at some point in time, the city, hopefully with the county's support, selects an area, and we have like eight, so this is page 13, by the way.
Yeah, your 13 is different from our 13.
Oh yeah, we did some changes. This is back a little bit later as well. You can find this in a couple pages, right? Yeah, so we use this slide twice.
But this is the case slide, right?
Yes, yeah, so, right, so... So in this baseline scenario...
36?
26.
Yeah, 26, we'll see a very similar slide. I think we may adjust it the numbers easier, to make it easier for you. But just focusing on this for a second, all this says is that once you've approved the areas that are going to go into the EIFD, everything beyond that point that comes as a result of new private investment is called, adds new property tax called property tax increment. And after you freeze the base, you can capture that increment and put it to work in that district for things like infrastructure, or housing, or job creation. All of those things are allowable. What you need is the money. And so that's the point of creating the district, is to even out the base and then collect the dollars above it. And I can show you how that works pretty quickly in some specific examples related to Palmdale in a couple of minutes. Any questions on that? You want me to keep going? Okay. So two districts that we're talking about. We have EIFDs, which are 45-year districts. As I said earlier, managed by a public financing authority and essentially implemented through an infrastructure financing plan. Counties and cities can lead that effort, and other districts can join, but the school district cannot. And there's no vote to create the district. There's only a vote if there is a bond issue to be offered. And that's a vote of the 55% of the registered voters, or of less than 12 registered voters, then it's by landowner. So it's pretty straightforward, any investment with a useful life of over 15 years. And CRIA, the other district we'll talk about tonight. Remember, we'll use these specifically when we look at the areas, which we'll do in a second. This is basically the same 45-year district. This is the one that really is focused on housing. You go down to the bottom, it allows economic revitalization, but you need to spend 25% of affordable housing from your set of side. So that's the difference between CRIA and EIFD primary. There are a couple of other differences, but those are the primary differences.
Larry?
Yes?
Can these exist concurrently?
They can exist side by side, but not on the overlap, because you'll have governance interference. You know, you need a financing authority to run one versus the other, so you can do them side by side. But, and you could, in fact, one of the scenarios that we wanna consider here is to just do that in Palmdale, especially for the TOD area around, which is really where we are right now. So the other thing is, and this is from last time, it's very flexible as to how you can use this tax increment. So you can build infrastructure, whether it's civic, or whether it's backbone, parks and open space, brownfield remediation, and of course, public-private transactions, workforce housing, blended-use transportation. And you're not alone. The reason, I think it's so timely, great question again, is that we couldn't show you this map two years ago, right? This is what's happened, is that lots of council members in many cities have been looking for a strategic advantage in promoting their community. And with the success that some of us have been having, we've been watching, and now is a time when we have more and more cities looking and moving forward on these specific strategies. Really good way to go. And by the way, SCAG has been a help also, because they've had some pilot projects that have helped induce some of the projects on this list. And you see Placentia's on, Laverne is on. And the reason that agencies are really going forward, well, at one level, they can, these districts can help local cities implement housing and climate action goals. But I'll tell you, the real reason is, is that, especially in an area like Palmdale, if you dedicate these areas for 45 years, and you have a spending plan for infrastructure, you start to get really focused private sector commitment, who's coming in, willing to take advantage of the benefits that you're willing to provide through a district based on their investment first. That's the beauty of these districts, is there is no increment without private investment. Period, game over, so...
So you've mentioned private investment quite a few times. So these are, in essence, projects where P3s would be more attractive?
Yeah, I think it's...
Not necessarily, or...
I think it's anything that would produce tax increments, so we could spend money on this. So the projects and the private investment we're talking about are residential, mixed use, hotel, any kind of job generators, areas, workforce areas. Any, in your case, airport area improvement, business park, anything that generates taxable revenue through property tax could be looked at as private investment. The key is, is through your infrastructure financing plan, you're number three, you're looking to get a local return on investment, right? That's the key. So what you're trying to do is say, "Look, we'll induce private sector to accelerate the growth of our revenues through jobs, housing production and infrastructure." So that's the, that's the P3. The P3 is really around implementing the infrastructure plan, which improves the area using the money generated by the private sector, and the cycle keeps going, the cycle of reinvestment.
So Larry, if we have areas that are lacking things like where the sewers are lacking.
Right.
Or we have areas where you have, where the roads are really inadequate.
Right.
But you don't wanna have this four-lane, two-lane, four-lane, two-lane.
Right.
As you start to get development.
Yes.
These are the types of areas where EIFDs will create that incentive for the private developer, now that you've brought in the trunk lines and you've brought in the main arterial, for them to start doing their housing, or their new shopping center, or a new theater, or something like that.
That's right. I mean, in the beginning, it's a little bit different. It's a little bit more awkward, because you need the tax increment to start the flow of infrastructure improvement. So one of the challenges of these districts is sort of how to get them primed in the beginning. Once they start rolling, yes, and then private sector invests, tax increment shakes out, put it back into this just based on the infrastructure financing plan, which you've already committed to publicly. They invest more, same cycle.
So you'll deal with how to make a million dollars, first get a million bucks?
First get a million bucks, right.
So hold up, hold up question on this. Are there really restrictions on properties that redevelopment agencies sold? Because we already sold all the redevelopment properties. Since they were already acquired for industrial projects, I see some of the slides that show industrial businesses.
Yes.
So are there any restrictions in getting this type of financing for redevelopment properties that were sold to investors?
None whatsoever. There's no restriction on formerly-owned redevelopment properties, especially if they've ended up in the private, in the private, in private ownership. The only distinction is, is that if the area that you create for an EIFD going forward included a portion of redevelopment in the past, then any existing obligations to that redevelopment agency must continue to be paid off.
I think we have a couple of those.
And you got a couple of those. But they don't interfere, because this is future tax increment, they don't interfere with that. And because the property's been sold to the private sector, they don't interfere with those properties. Okay. So it's really pretty clean break, and that is one of the benefits. Another benefit, by the way, is you can bundle up any other revenues with these districts. The state in creating these was very permissive in saying you can use federal, state, even private sector, front-end money to prime that pump. And that's one of the strategies we use.
So that's where the opportunity zones would come in.
That's exactly where opportunity zones come from, because opportunity zones, as you may all know, these are low-income census tracts that were selected by each state through a process. As of last year, April of last year, all of these 8,726 opportunity zones throughout the United States were selected. We have 879 in California, about 270 in LA County, and multiple, several in the city of Palmdale. Now, in those districts, tax investors that have made a profit elsewhere, sale of stock, sale of a business, sale of real estate. Unlike 1031, it doesn't have to be a like-kind property. If you sell something and have a capital gain, within six months of that capital gain, you can put those gains into a qualified opportunity fund who makes an investment in one of those census tracts. So that can happen. And because there is a time pressure on those investors to invest within six months, and then there's an added time pressure to double the value of their transferred gains within 30 months, that's the early activity that you're talking about. Because the beauty about Oz's is they induce early investment on a time basis. Otherwise, the tax protection that's given to those capital gains owners starts to go away.
You have to put it into a, into a fund, but does the fund have to activate some project? As long as, as long as that fund doubles within that 30 months, it's like, theoretically, could wait 24 months?
So, kinda breaking it down, pretty close, what happens is, after December 31, 2017, anyone with a capital gain can transfer that gain into a qualified opportunity fund, which by the way, is just a two-page 8986 filing with the IRS. The reason they do it, Mr. Mayor, is to keep track of these investments. They want the fund to make the investor. It's still, if we have, God bless us, a million-dollar profit, it's still our money going into what we call the COFF, Qualified Opportunity Fund. Now, that fund has about six more months to make an investment. But once it makes that investment, if it's a real estate investment, the amount of deferred gains that we put in has to be doubled in terms of expense levels within 30 months. So we put in a million, that fund has gotta spend at least another million within 30 months to improve that property, because the whole point about Oz's is to transfer gains, but only if they go to work in the funds. Not to sit on them, but to go to work. And that's the beauty of opportunity zone funds. So by the way, an Oz can also buy a business. Slightly different process for a business versus real estate. But the real estate is timed to a 30-month program. So that's why, yes... So that's why, yes, I mean, additional funds could come from Oz projects, that's the whole point. So these are the eight areas, starting from the north, going down through the center, and then moving to the west, uh, that we're looking at putting, evaluating for purposes of consideration for an EIFD. Let me just use this as a better way to summarize these. So sort of on the, on the north side, you've got four airport-related areas, all pretty large, between five-hundred-and-fifty and nine-hundred acres about approximately, all related to airport activity and business activity related to an airport. Those would be highly vacant properties that would be, would produce a lot of tax increment if we could get new investment to occur after we create the district. The whole point of creating the district is in terms of timing. Once you figure out what you want to do, the importance is to create the district before significant investment pours in, because you're trying to capture the tax increment. That's the whole strategy, right?
So I, I got really excited with this, because I was gonna see, uh, sewer on the east side, on the Four Points. Because that area, I still think that is prime for, uh, development, because the lack of sewer,
Right.
Uh, that costs too much for a developer to bring it in. So why wouldn't this be, this work on, of bringing a sewer, uh, plant or?
I think it will. Do you want me to skip through to that, uh, Area Six? Because I think, to me, this is really, uh, what you're talking about. So Transit Area Six, let me just go back to here. We know where we are, we'll see our highway right here, actually, as we sit, stand here. So this is a area that's about nine-hundred-and-seven acres. It also includes a series of opportunity zones. You can see them. So we're thinking that we could capture the activity around the transit for TOD, and then link these opportunity zones into that area. So that's sort of the strategy there. So that's what you're seeing, is I think there's some evaluation as to what's in Five and Six and Four to see if we should expand that or not. Those are all issues that we would face going forward. But as a placeholder, all of these, I just want to point out that all of these districts that we're listing, are, these are potential districts for, for ongoing evaluation. So we leave here tonight enthusiastic about this as an economic development strategy. You've got up to twenty-five percent of the city's area in almost seventeen thousand acres, seventeen thousand acres. And those colored boxes can shift a bit, you know, there's nothing set in concrete.
But then we walk right to the east side.
They can go east, they can go west or south. I think for us, it's just a matter of what will the county support? Because we need their money, which I'll show you in a minute. So it's really a matter of.
From a regional approach, is what you're saying?
Yes, from a regional approach.
So there's, so, uh, let me cut to the chaser. There's a, there's an area over there that, um, we've had a lot of, interest in seeing something happen, and it's over further east off of Forty-seventh. And a big problem over there is that it, uh, it, it's the.
It's not on the map, okay.
No, it's not on the map.
Okay.
And it's, it, it, but it's just, it, I don't know, what's the sewer cost, like a million dollars a foot or something like that? Or some crazy numbers for this stuff. And, and that whole, that, it, it's over off the Four Points area over there, where, uh, Periblasse Highway, Forty-seventh, uh, Avenue T, uh, and all that all comes together out there. It's a, it's a fairly major intersection, um, but it's essentially, three-fourths of it is effectively undeveloped, and the other corner's, uh, got a swap meet, you know?
Got it.
Right? So the, the thing is, is that everybody said, yeah, I want to do this over there. Oh, but man, we can't, we can't do anything unless we have a sewer.
Yeah, sure, thank you. There we go. Yeah, so it's this, more around this box here, correct, on the right?
The bottom right, um, like Periblasse and Avenue T, where you see that?
Yes, I see it.
Yeah, so that's, in that right, right-hand quadrant, right lower quadrant there.
Got it.
So because of the traffic volumes and the potential to get some, uh, sales tax, um, you know, again, at the beginning, I got excited that we may be able to finance through this mechanism, extending the existing sewer lines, maybe even putting a sewer plant, a treatment plant, because of the lack of that infrastructure. But again, I understand this is just the beginning, and maybe that's something that we could look at? Because it's.
I think Juan and I are, we're, we're both shocked when we see this map, because there's nothing in our districts on these.
I think if you were looking at something that's where it's more raw, and where we can get that regional on it, because there's, there's nothing over in the Rancho Vista area either. Uh, it's, it's, it's all in the industrial commercial zone there.
Yes.
Kind of down the middle of the city, and where there's still a lot of empty space in that, in that lower corner there, where there's stuff getting ready to pop open right now.
So.
But I, I agree with you. I think we've got to find a solution for that Forty-seventh intersection out there.
So, so a couple of things, I mean, we tasked Larry with looking at these locations, um, and we ended up mostly, we're, almost all west side for a couple of reasons. One, these are all areas that we see, um.
I'm, I'm looking at Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three, Zone Four, Zone Six is all.
It's all federal, yeah.
All Z's to the freeway anyhow.
The only ones, certainly, ones by the airport, which makes sense, we're trying to repump or start the airport. That does make sense to me. Uh, and I was actually also thinking about that sewer issue with, um, Forty-seventh and S with the movie theater.
Right. And, and so that, I mean, we've, we're halfway there with that, with our sanitation reserves and so forth. I think we're, we're making progress. So the two things that we looked at was, one, what were the areas that we can see the most activity within the next couple of years? And certainly, Seven and Eight, Ritter and Anaverty, uh, are, are moving forward. Uh, the airport is moving forward, the TOD is moving forward. And so that was one criteria we kind of looked at, when we started picking these areas. And the other was, which ones have the most regional significance, not just creating retail and housing on, on just the EIFD part, but having a regional significance, whether it's the hospital, the transportation center, the airport. And those were critical in order to get the county to partner with us. And, and, because they're gonna look at this from a, a regional standpoint of, okay, what's the regional benefit?
They're gonna say, what's it for me? Of the park money.
Right.
You know? Well, that's just for your little park, and your little park, and your little park, right? What's the big reason to do?
But there's no reason why we couldn't add another zone that picks up, you know, that key area of Forty-seventh and so forth, and deals with the sewer issue there, because it, it is a major infrastructure issue.
Yeah.
It, the idea is then, you know, how do we sell it to the county as, okay, we're gonna create more retail and more housing? Um, you know, is that as easy to sell to the county as we're gonna create a transportation center or an airport? It would just, it's just a nuance. But there's not, this is not cut, set, and stone, this was just our first blush of.
No, I understand that, but again, I just wanted to make sure that we look at what the needs are.
Maybe Juan and I are gonna have to come up with some brainstorming for a really good project that we can get on the east side, that the county wants to buy into.
And they will, we're willing to participate, I believe, if we come into this agreement. Uh, the other opportunity there is, again, the opportunity zones on Palmdale and Thirty-Fifth.
Correct.
Are in Thirty-Fifth. Those are on the east side. Um, and if we can just take, take a few moments and see what we can do to really bring that infrastructure across the city. It seems like we're just, again, focusing on, on the west side.
Yeah, so.
Not, no, actually.
Well, the airport is not on the west side, but.
It's, it's, the majority of that stuff is east of, uh, except for the, uh, Ritter.
Yeah, I think the opportunity, uh, you know, sincerely, is to figure out what's in these opportunity zone areas. I think you, you said it right, could we get out of that a pretty significant project that could help tie the story together? See, look, I said, I said earlier, this is kind of like a business plan. You have to think about this as like going to a lender. You know, you're going to the county, we want their money. And so, part of the strategy on this board is to say, okay, well, we know Seven and Eight probably are gonna go pretty early, because they're getting ready, so that's kind of our dollars, right? We can bring a lot to the table if we get that activity going. We know that we need to do a lot of work in one, two, three, four, but we also know in one, two, three, four, we're looking at regional impacts related to an airport. County's gonna like that. Just giving you sort of the spin, right? Then we know blue and purple, Five and Six, has some of those same features, regional transit, connection east-west or south, as well as medical, which has always been an issue, right? We have to work that same kind of, you know, supportive story in, and that's why we left it open here to take a really look at this in conjunction with these, because we think we have a really good way, we just don't know yet, because we haven't started the work. This is our first conversation with you.
So Larry, and, and some of those zones over there, especially in Five and Six, I've driven some of those areas, well, for Five and Six mostly, uh, they, there's, um, already a lot of existing housing in those.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it isn't like we've got, uh, a, a chunk of open land, and, and what do we, you know, uh, uh, that's been the conversation I've had with some guys that have been wanting to invest and looking for the Oz's. Richard and I took a, took a drive through there and looked at it, and we're scratching our heads going like, all right, what can you do here? Because something short of another apartment is kind of like, what do you, what do you put in, in there? So that's, I mean, that, that was a frustrating thing about the way they came up with these zones, is, you know, somebody went,
Yeah.
There's one.
Yeah, the reasons for one, and not necessarily supportive for, for reasons for the other, but if we can put them together, then the economics can make some sense, if you, you understand where I'm going with that. It's just that, you've got to cook that story. If you just permit me to show you one other thing that I think would help. When you look at all these funding areas, right, and let's say you add a ninth, no problem. But when you look at these, the ones that are there, and you go back to this chart of about a billion dollars in value, the way this works is that if we could get, let's say, four hundred million in early activity, I'm not talking about some of the smaller pieces, let's say, but larger pieces in seven or eight years, which is a good amount of economic investment, here's what it does for us. So here's all your tax rates on the side, right? Here's yours, six point six cents, that's about seven cents. But on the left is where the story is. We have in Palmdale, an average share is seven cents on every tax dollar. We also get, uh, vehicle and loo, uh, motor vehicle and loo tax fees, and those fees are ten point six cents for us. The EIFD law in particular allows us to include that. So that gives us like seventeen point six cents of every dollar to throw into these EIFDs. If we go to the county, here's the point, and we get that county share of up to fifteen cents, which they are now allowing, just getting to four hundred million dollars of new value gets us one point three million per year. And you can make that into twenty million dollars through a bond issue. So literally, for every four hundred million in increased value, you're picking up twenty million of spendable for these areas to reinvest, right? That's the story that we need to come up with.
Yeah, but, and that has to be reinvested in those areas.
Yes, it has to be invested in those areas. It can actually be invested outside of the areas based on some relationship to the area. So if a, a transit line went a little bit south of Six, that'd be okay, you could still invest there because it's related to the transit backlog. So yeah, you have a little bit of flexibility. But my point is, is when you really look at this.
I think he was, I think he was talking about the Oz's. He had, it has to be a turnaround within those Oz's.
The Oz's has to be in that area.
Correct.
And it is possible that some of the larger parcels of the Oz's sit in One and Two. I, I think that's what our, some of our early recall was. But if there's projects that, one, are sizable enough to be induced in Four, Five, and Six, and the county would buy into their purpose, then I think we have a way of really expanding that box. That's all. We just haven't started that work. It's not like we want to ignore that opportunity. We also wanted to present what we think starts to be a pretty good story for the county, as I was saying, because you have regional transit in the airport, regional transit in Six, you have early start money in Seven and Eight, right? So you're trying to put together a strategy that's gonna work. And there's nothing to say that that couldn't include these areas, it's just beginning. Okay, so, really, at the end of the day, in addition to the potential for looking at an EIFD in Area Six, I want to drill down here, you also have the possibility of using a Creia instead of an EIFD for this area. Why would you consider that? Well, because it's housing-oriented, and because you get the powers of eminent domain. With a Creia, you don't get it with an EIFD. So another iteration, it's not only just Area Six plus Oz's, but it's Area Six, Creia with Oz's versus EIFD with Oz's. So all I'm really trying to say is, we're genuinely just beginning. What's the best tool?
Right.
We're trying, what's the best area, and what's the best tool? That's what these three slides say, that we just have the work to do on these. We have a couple of ways to go. Makes some sense? Okay, so then, I think we went through this, these are the Ritter, Ritter Ranch, Anaverty. The nice thing about these is they're fairly large, they have a lot of residential units, and they could go on the books, the new tax increment books, pretty early. Early money is good for EIFDs, because it's a forty-five-year district. The more, if you go back to this slide, the more you can pick up in the early increment days, the better off you are, right? The more, the steeper we can make this slope, the more money we're getting. And that's the strategy you want to solve for, so long as it sells to our potential partner, because that slope really slows down, and we don't have their fifteen cents. Right? So those are the governors of the strategy that we're putting together, that if you say, you know what, this is worth looking at, this could change our future. If we could create some version of this map, whether it extends to all the Oz's or not, some version of this map, and we could get the county to buy in and give us money for thirty years, twenty-five years, forty-five years, wow. We could really shift forward in an economic development plan and improve this community in a significant way. That's kind of the premise that this has come to you tonight. That is the strategy. I'm gonna wrap up by saying a couple of things. One is, you, as I said earlier, we can combine our tax increment with other funding sources. The state already has set up some programs that we would be eligible for, like cap and trade grants, Sequo streamlining. There are dedicated areas that, you can see the green circle, that are transit priority areas per state law. It's another overlay, so just imagine, just in Six alone, what we have, Creia versus EIFD, Oz, TPA, transit priority area. I mean, it's, there's a lot to think about here. This strategy is just beginning. All these maps we're willing, really wanting you to do is to see the universe of opportunity that faces us if we go forward, which we're pretty enthusiastic about. So why would the county even talk to us? Well, we think, based on our experience in Redondo, in Placentia, in Laverne, that the county is looking for programs and projects out of these districts that further their agenda. So if you follow the county Board of Supervisors in the last couple of years, they've approved an economic development plan, a housing plan, and a sustainability plan. They just finished the sustainability plan this week, right? All of those talk about resource management, mobility, housing for all economic strata, and regional infrastructure that's sustainable. So we already know, in a way, what our co-ventures are gonna be looking for. It's up to us to answer this question by serving up a plan that would entice them, and we do.
I think they were very deliberate about the way that they move forward with those plans.
Yes.
And with their, what they're transmitting to the communities. I think they're telling us that this is, this is where we, this is where we're gonna go.
Right.
You can come along with us.
Or not.
You can do your own thing, but this is, this is where our priorities are and how, how we want to proceed. So I think they've been, I think they're being pretty clear about what they're looking at.
Are those priorities up here in the Antelope Valley as well, or is it just more focused on the LA more urban areas? Because all of these are rural areas, so I, I could see the county focusing on providing housing and transportation, and all the things that you mentioned, but they want to.
It's all like a frame it, right?
Right.
You know, I think in beyond that, Mr. Mayor, I, I see statements, for example, in the economic development plan from two years ago that says that they will cooperate with cities that create EIFDs that pro- promote sustainability, promote infrastructure and housing. So they, they haven't said these kinds of cities, they've said every city in the county. So it seems, proof is gonna be in the pudding, okay? I'm, I'm a veteran of these county discussions, they're not always easy. You know, the, honestly, the county CAO doesn't wake up in the morning and go, ah, I can't wait to get Palmdale fifteen cents of my money. They just don't. So this is a hard sell. I, I think we have to be realistic of that, but it's one that we're getting done. And the door was open, to your point, because these policies that they've, they've done three major policies in the last two years, and they're all county-based, they're not city-based. So they seem to have opened the door for this kind of discussion, whether or not they'll really sit down with us and break bread and work it out, remains to be seen.
With, with, with the, um, what, with what the Board of Supervisors is doing now, um, with the jails.
Yes.
Do, e- does the EIFDs, could we do, um, a law enforcement training center in the North County? Could we do a jail in the North County? It would, would it cover something like that, um, and because?
They're not building jails.
Well, the, but the county could buy in on something like that, if, if we could sell it in a proper way, because they are having issues with, with the jails, and we, we've had the same. Because they are having issues with, with the jails. And we, we've had the same, um, Sheriff's Academy for a long, long time. And maybe we need to have an official one in the North County. But I'm trying to find things that we can actually, maybe develop on the East Side.
I think you're on the right track.
Isn't that what, isn't that what they're already working on at pitches with, uh, in cooperation with Santa Clarita for that training center, for the North County Training Center?
Yeah, I hadn't heard about that.
It's on.
Yes.
The county property.
Yeah, we've, they've talked about it. It's not that far along, as far as I know. And Cosmo represents the county on, on a ranch. It's an assignment of ours and we just went out. And they were looking in this case for more private development. And by the way, in that, that's a great example of county willingness. I just thought it was very appropriate. As you know, Barker is our supervisor here, and she's a supervisor on a ranch, and that's in her district. So when Cosmo was working on the RFP for developers for Ona Ranch, we can, we basically recommended to the county that they agree to place Ona Ranch in an EIFD because of all the infrastructure that's needed. This is to your point. And they said, okay, if we find a developer, we would entertain that. So another clue that says to us, it's possible for them to come in. Now, I really like your notion though of getting something they like, right? Because that is part of it. In, in another city, I won't mention it because these are all public meetings, we're looking at a fire station that would be the county fire station, cause they need it in that EIFD. So that's an enticement. In Redondo, we know the supervisor in the whole area of the South Bay that's not in Redondo uses the Redondo Beach as their backyard, as their front yard to the ocean. That's why the supervisor is thinking, oh, we could finally get a regional park in, in that district, right? That we normally wouldn't get without the city and the county working together. So you really have, that's the hook, right? So in any of these areas, speaking to your point, any of these areas, whether they're in a major line or not right now, we find that hook, we'll be right back. Cause the only way to have success here is to get really, for us, is to get the county to say yes.
Can I get you? With what Laura's saying here though, with wanting something out there. One of the things that we've been trying to figure out is how to integrate the East Side Transit into the Metro Palmdale-Lancaster Transit. So, you know, we, 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 we keep reinventing the wheel with what we're doing out there. We, we're doing a program out there that we're starting right now with, uh, it's a, it's a micro-transit. And we're trying to figure out, okay, where do we bring them into? Because we don't wanna take them in a micro-transit and take them from curb to curb. We wanna take them from curb to hub. So that might be something that if we could figure out a way to, to put in a, a, a sub-hub, so to speak, in that area, that, that you could then take your, your East Side City and your, your, your rural county areas out there. Cause they've been screaming for some improvements, but the problem is, is that you gotta have more buses to put more people on, because you don't have the people to put on the buses just yet. So it's just like the circuitous, you know, failure. So that's why we're looking at this micro-transit to try to start building that up. But we've gotta be able to bring them in. And I would rather bring them into a, a transit hub as opposed to dumping them off in front of Tom's on Forty-seventh.
Yeah, so I think that strategic alignment between these districts is really gonna, could make that possible, right? I mean, it could really start to make that a lot more possible. If you can connect these areas, that becomes part of the story. I always thought about, I think you and I even talked about connecting the medical to the transit district. Because so many, if you have regional medical, it's hard for people to, you know, get around. If they could take transit to the core transit area, but be shuttled to the medical, that would be another.
Well, that's why they picked that spot.
That's right, okay.
They picked that spot specifically for the hospital because of the 10th Street corridor, the freeway, and the potential for transit up to the facilities in Lancaster. Because a lot of these guys work in both. The, the technicians and the, and the staff share, you know, um, time between those.
Can, can I get you back to slide twenty-six, is the CRIA slide, I think?
Sure, sure. The CRIA slide, absolutely.
Cause I'll, I'll show you the part that makes me so sad, is, is test number two to meet the criteria. Is that we have to have a crime rate five percent over state average. We've worked so hard to get our crime rate down, you know, it's, it's just, I, I hate.
You need to start pumping these numbers up.
I, I just, I feel like that punishes cities who have worked so hard to.
Here's the good news. You only have to meet three out of four there.
Well, amen to that.
Right, so we could do, you know, this is funny. This is not the first time that comments come up. It's a kind of a odd test, in my view, but it's obviously, you know, slandered areas that have a different kind of set of issues. But you can do unemployment and then just make subjective findings as to infrastructure and deteriorating structures. Very easy for us in this case, I think. So we can meet that. And eighty percent of the land area has to have an annual meeting speed and make them less than eighty percent. So I think we can make these tests. Again, you know, where we put, this is census tract specific. So we'll be testing census tracts to the east as well. It makes sense to do that. It's just, we have to start somewhere. I think it's a good point. So, so just kinda, you know, I know I've been going on for a while and I, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna overstay my welcome. But I do wanna say, just wrap up on this part by saying, look, again, all of this, excuse me, back here is really, the objective for Palmdale is an LA County partnership. So whatever we do in this next round, if you're excited about this, it will be with that in mind. Because with more money, we'll do better, right? The partnership yields that, uh, that scenario. So then just kinda quickly, this is, this is Laverne. I thought you'd be interested in seeing how the progress we're making. This was adopted on October thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Laverne is the lead public agency. The LA County Resolution of Participation is expected just about now. It got pushed to September. Uh, and we are on for September eighth, I'm told. The EIFD goals, much like Area Six, are TOD and sustainability around the station. So it has some similarity to Area Six.
That's a gold line over there.
That's a gold line. And that, and that, by the way, got announced this week that they were gonna extend that line way out east, right? So that's a really windfall for Laverne.
Metro talking about that.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright. I didn't realize that was part, part and parcel to this, uh, EIFD though.
Yeah, it is.
It's encouraging to see that they're, they're putting those, they're putting those things together.
They are. They're, yeah, so and that's part of the, that's why transit, I think Area Six of all these areas is really strong because it has a good regional message. So if we can expand it, great, because as long as we can keep the regional message. This is the, green is the gold line station right here. Now, the interesting thing, I just wanna bring your attention, is you have three separate areas. One, purple, yellow, for a total of about a hundred and ten acres. And they're not contiguous, just like the ones we're looking at here. In EIFDs, you have to be, you can be non-contiguous contiguous. In CRIA, it has to be contiguous, right? So that's another one of those nuances where we're shaping these things, what works better, right? So maybe the housing works better for CRIA, but if we wanna move into some of the OZs, we can't leapfrog. We have to drag it all. Maybe then it puts us back to an EIFD strategy.
But can a city have more than one CRIA?
City can have more than one CRIA.
And they get more than one EIFD, right?
They get more than one EIFD.
Is there a cap?
Not that I know of. You put your whole city in, uh, and the, the idea is you wouldn't have to have more than one EIFD. Cause you, EIFD, you can have separate untouching sub-areas. So it's kind of repetitive. You don't wanna have as many, so many JPAs or PFAs. They're, they tend to be an administrative burden for all of you. And, and in this case, a lot of this is around the Pomona Avenue, the Pomona Fairgrounds, where there are really excess parking lots that are underutilized. And, and so what the city did is they upgraded the zoning to add for a little more density that would allow for a couple million square feet in terms of park, housing, hotel, and retail. I wanted to show you this because this is the power of the increment. Believe it or not, that whole hundred acres right now is only producing sixty-three million in assessed valuation tax, right? If those, if the EIFD is, is already approved, and if the county comes on and we can build out a pretty nominal, it's a hundred and fifty rooms, a hundred and ten thousand retail. These are not huge, huge projects. Not nearly the kind of projects you're looking at here. That would yield about five hundred million new assessed value. So the difference between four eighty and sixty-three is that four hundred million I showed you on your map.
That's your money you've got to work with.
That's what, and that produces about twenty to thirty million dollars to put in those improvements, including an overpass between one side of Arrow to the other, for which, by the way, Arrow is so wide, you need to track scholarship to get across it, you know, so. So I think it's an important improvement. Placentia is kinda different, but this is the one that has the county and the city involved together. And this is the one Brian worked on. Look at the economic benefits that we were able to sell. We picked the district. I'll show you that in a minute. We were very selective to include things and improve the county. And so there's twenty million to the city, twenty-two and fifteen million to the county. This is what got their attention. Plus a bunch of housing units that they wanted, uh, and a bunch of construction jobs and a lot of permanent jobs. And so it's a three hundred acre site. It's mostly transit oriented. Here's a TOD packing house area right around the transit station, red star here. And that's what the county bought into. They saw that these kinds of improvements would actually make them some money too. And the whole point is, do you want a percentage of something or a hundred percent of nothing? That's what we have to, and it's how we define that percentage of something that has to be attractive to them. That's where we go. So again, in wrapping, we have, of course, opportunity zones in the middle. We have the new districts on the right. We have our typical land use and zoning and other tools, uh, you know, on the right. The typical districts on the left. And of course, RDAs in the middle. Poor RDAs, rest in peace. That is the status of economic development. In your case, bringing it back home to Palmdale, if you like the potential for these strategies, then the next step would be to essentially have us work with you and the staff to refine the EIFD boundaries. That's refine. These were just placeholders. Identify the infrastructure within these with the county in mind, right? Because their hook is important to us. Figure out how much we could generate, because that's important to the county, right? Tax increment capacity. And then on the basis of three, figure out among us, what's the best approach to get the county in with us? And go ahead and implement. That's the next chapter of work. It would take, you know, basically the feasibility evaluation, which is one, two, and three, will take three to four months. And then success, in my view, for the next nine to twelve months counts on number four. Can we be, can we convince the county to be a partner based on what we find in number three and what we tell them? So thanks for your patience. You've been really terrific about it. And just any other questions or comments, we're here to help.
I'd like, I'd like to see us continue to look at those other opportunity zones.
Sure.
That were just to the east there. See if there's a way, I think we really have to do an evaluation of the properties that are there. Uh, because again, some of the guys that I've talked to in, you know, to kinda look in and go, what can we do, you know? So I, I think that's a, that's a bigger question than just myself or some guy driving through the neighborhood's gonna figure out.
Right.
And between that, and then seeing if there's some way we can create a regional, um, hook into the, that Forty-seventh East somehow.
Right.
Because, I mean, that's been sitting there for twenty, thirty years, that we've been kinda squirreling around trying to figure out what to do out there. And we all know what we wanna do. The thing is, is we've gotta, if we can get that infrastructure into that area, that place takes off.
Yeah.
When you said the regional hook, that's a good way to say it.
Obviously, we need that regional hook.
That, for all of this, right?
As, as, well, we wanna, we, 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 obviously, we all want a theater, and we all would like another nice shopping center.
Of course.
But the county, they could care less.
Right. But you can, that's that Tai Chi thing. You can get that just as long as you get that regional hook momentum going your way. And if it's, if there's enough in it for them, you can get what you need out of it. That's sort of the new world of economic development.
Well, it's kinda big case to have that meeting with the county and see what their plan is for the Antelope Valley.
Yes.
And on that side of the Antelope Valley. Because again, those things that you mentioned, yeah.
I think the county itself has a plan. They're, they're more philosophical in their approach to stuff?
They, they do have planning documents. They have a planning department. Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to see what their plans are, uh, to that side of the city. Because the things that you mentioned, housing, transportation, all of those things are important because they are in an urbanized area. That's what they want down below, as we say. But what are their plans on this side of town? They could not really have anything on the books as of now. I know that some time ago, they worked on a, a specific plan.
Yeah, well, I think that's more all of that unincorporated area.
We need to talk to them and see what their vision is.
Right.
Because if their vision is to keep it rural as it is, which I'm presuming that's what they want, because that's what the residents want, I really don't see, I, I find it difficult to have that hook with the county on that side of town. We could come up with some projects here in our side. I can think of a few that would benefit and, you know, get that area with the infrastructure that is needed. Not only sewer, roads, and all, all the things that development, uh, requires. Um, but I, again, I was really excited at the beginning, but when you put that map and all those ASR over here.
I think he's looking for where's the, where's the, where's the last potential.
So, but I think that we need to have our staff look at what the potential is on that side of town. I, I'm gonna keep, I've been saying it all, all along.
Yep.
There's a lot of potential over there because of the traffic generation.
Right.
And the developers just wanna come in, but once they find out there's a sewer, it's gonna cost millions of dollars. They just turn off and they just go away. Uh, so we can have staff, uh, look at, again, I can, can think of a couple of projects already. Maybe that's a discussion that we will have with staff. Uh, but I, again, I'm very supportive of the process, these programs, because they will benefit the city of Palmdale. But it seems to be something that happens all the time. The attention goes to where the, the development, the desired land is.
Where the traffic is.
Again, there's traffic over there.
Yeah, but I mean, the traffic and it's moving.
No, I understand that. But again, I just want to see something that we may be able to bring to our side of the city. Because again, there is potential there. And we need to.
We'll come up with some, some concepts on that. We'll, we'll come up with a, a ninth site. And probably put together a few ideas in regard to what kind of hooks we can put out there. Because if it's just adding retail and housing, the county's gonna go, yeah, you know, not interested.
That's why I threw out the other suggestion as far as maybe a small transit hub. You know, realistically, the county's been very, yeah, the, the county's been very adamant about moving with the, um, the, the, the North County plan and with the, with the things that the rural town councils have come up with. And they don't want the density. They don't want that. They, they like the, the fact that there's some services nearby, but they don't want it there.
Right.
You know, so, uh, I think that if, if we can, uh, if we can figure out a way to, to balance that, so that, okay, look, this is gonna benefit the, the area and is gonna be able to benefit the, the, the county residents that wanna maintain a, maybe a little lower density. They don't want all the commercial development. And that's, that's why that one little pocket, they love that little pocket over there at Desert View Highlands.
Yep.
You know, because they don't ever see code enforcement.
Right.
You know?
You know, one thing that comes to mind right away is the SE areas that the county has, the sensitive environmental areas.
Yes, uh-huh.
I do remember them having a, a, a couple of meetings about five years ago now. And that goes along the edge of the city boundary, which is on the east side. So if they implement.
Along the barrel springs.
So it starts all the way to, um, across Palmdale Boulevard because of the creek.
Oh, okay.
Um, so again, that, that's an opportunity to see how that can be improved. Uh, and have some interest on, once they see that those kind of improvements, um, maybe developers will be interested in coming in and utilizing these kind of programs. Again, we need to sit down with the county and see what their vision is for that area, because otherwise, there's gonna be no hook.
Yeah, I, it's, you know, it's like, I always, it, it kinda come back to the analogy of a business plan. You have a business plan, you kinda know what your lenders are looking for, you know? You don't really just go in saying, hey, I've got a good idea, right? You, you've talked to the officers of the bank. You said, you know, what kind of ratios? What are you looking for? If the county's the same way, I think these questions, regional connector, you know, regional attraction, what do you want? You know, you're asking the key question. What is it in your policy that you see here? Because if then, if we can track projects that mesh regional connectivity with desire to get something done, we have a business plan that's gonna get welcomed a lot, a higher chance of getting welcomed. The better it is, the more money we'll get.
That was part of the pitch in our discussions with the supervisors, with, with our supervisor and with some of the other supervisors was, that was always their pitch was, what's in it for us?
What's in it for me?
What's in it for us? So I mean, that, I mean, uh, that sounds great. What are you gonna do for me?
Right.
So I'm, that, that's where they're, that's, and I think they're more enthusiastic about it now, uh, since all these cities have been beaten down the door on. I'm showing them that, hey, look at, all, all these cities can't do this unless you work with us.
You cooperate.
So I think, I think they've gotten, uh, I think they've gotten a little religion in that respect, that they realize that, that, that there's a lot of money that they're not making. That they're not making over the last couple of years because they've been a little bit stiff on their, on their policy there, so.
So on the proposed timing here that you have, the visibility evaluation to three months and then the formation, six to twelve months, can, can we do something between the twelve month now and twelve months to try to get some investors looking at these possibilities? Are we just gonna sit here for twelve months until you show us those areas?
That, that area right now, those guys from Alabou are coming back up.
Yeah, no, I think the. Yeah, no, I think the feasibility, you go right to work is I, you know, you gotta identify the projects. Honestly, otherwise, without increment, there's no discussion, right? So I think that's, yeah, absolutely. This is meant to get going. That's why I'm hoping that we can do that. So we can produce a list of projects, a list of needs, get to the county's heart on their priorities and see if we got a deal number four.
I think we need to, um, I think we need to pull the trigger.
Yeah.
We need to get moving on this, keep this other stuff in mind, these other topics, because it's all, I mean, this is stuff that we've all. Been trying to move forward with, but we need to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, cuz the delay would be, if we delay, if we don't grab it while we can, someone else is gonna offer it to them and they're gonna go to them, to that city. So we need to get on board and get this done.
When, one of the things we wanna do too is lock in the nineteen-twenty tax rate for the base.
Yeah.
And so that's part of what drives this timing.
Well, before the county assessor starts scoring, I mean, I see the property guys gone up a little bit and.
Right.
Jeff's guys will be out there, ka-ching, ka-ching.
So how do we lock that, um, mechanism right now?
So by hitting the, I mean, this timeline gets us there, I think Larry set this up so that the timeline gets us. We have the IFDs formed before the next tax assessment goes through. And so we, we lock in nineteen-twenty and so that, so he's giving us a window.
Gives a lower base, it gives us more room to move.
Right.
That's brilliant, yeah. And if we move now, we can get, we can make that work.
So you've been in conversations with the cost of this contract with Councilman?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we have a proposal, uh, but the first step was within my authority, the next step I've gotta bring back to council.
I have a feeling we're gonna be seeing that soon.
So we'll be bringing that, that back to the next session. This was to really kinda get deep into this. And see if this is something the council wants to do. Unfortunately, Larry doesn't work for free and, uh, but it's money well invested. And so, uh, we wanna make sure that we're not going down a path that we bring a staff report to council and you go, what are you talking about? What is this? Why are we spending this money?
The early warning, essentially, that, that, I mean, that's, that's, that's really important for all of us. I'm, I'm sorry, these guys aren't here. Cause I'll have a million questions. What I, what I did, uh, uh, tell, um, the other members is. We need to try to set something up so they can get a briefing on this, you know, um, you know, before we get too far, much further down the road. So if they have any other, I, I don't know what we haven't hit on here, but God knows what, you know, somebody else is thinking about. Just wanna make sure we cover all the bases. Everybody's on the same page and we're all moving forward, you know, with a, with a common vision here. Cause this is important community-wide to, to.
No, yeah, again, I mean, it's, it's city-wide. I, I just don't wanna sound like I, you know, I'm not pro city of Palmdale. I'm a council member for the city of Palmdale. But again, I, I see opportunities over there. And, and I think that it's my obligation to bring those opportunities up to everybody's attention.
Let's see what boxes we can get checked in, huh?
Yeah, let's, let's get together and talk.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the time. We'll be back shortly, I guess.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Alright, well, that'll do it. Council, anything else? Any other questions or comments for staff? No, I think they, I think we've pretty much made our.
They wanna get together and see what we can do on the east side.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, yeah. Yeah. Okay, alright. We'll adjourn the meeting then. Thank you.